The January 14th, 2025 legislative session of the Anne Rundle County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Ms. Ledbetter will now lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
First, please join me in a moment of silence for the passing of President Carter, the untimely passing of Master firefighter Chris Higgins in the line of duty, the victims of the New Orleans terror attack, and the families impacted by the wildfires in California. Please pray in a manner consistent with your faith, as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve. Please help us listen and open our hearts, open our minds in our discussions today. Help us to walk away learning something new from each other to benefit the people we serve. Amen. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussion in public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in the audience, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received three pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Signed up ahead of time, we have Jim Bonjourneau. I don't think Mr. Bonjourneau is here this morning. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. All right. Since no one there, then the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I would like to withdraw Bill 100-24. And I just, would it be all right if I just make a very brief comment?
Sure.
For anyone that might be listening or, you know, here in the audience interested in this particular bill, please reach out to me because I do plan on introducing it again, or at least the same concept, and I would love feedback before I reintroduce it. So, thank you very much.
Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 16th, 2024.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:04 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 16th, 2024?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of December 16th, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this morning.
Bill Number 125, an ordinance concerning branches of county government, executive branch, reorganization, Office of Transportation, Public Ethics, Transportation Officer. Bill Number 225, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, zoning, development requirements for particular types of development, redevelopment. Bill Number 325, an ordinance concerning general development plan, Region 9 Plan. Bill Number 425, an ordinance concerning comprehensive zoning, Region 9. Bill Number 525, an ordinance concerning zoning, requirements for conditional uses, Waterman's Home commercial use. Bill Number 625, an ordinance concerning public safety, animal care and control, zoning, miniature pigs in residential districts.
Um, let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this morning.
There are no resolutions to be introduced this morning.
Okay. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, for our next legislative session in our chambers. Now, I'm going to hit the gavel again. The January 24th, 2025 work session of the Anne Rundle County Council is called to order. Do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin? No? All right. Okay. So, our first item is Bill Number 9824, an ordinance concerning purchasing small procurements. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year. Bill 9824, give me one second. So, Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table are Catrice Parsons from Central Services Purchasing and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So, the administration, at the request of Central Services, is seeking council approval of a change to the county code that would align the code with a change that was approved at the last election to the Anne Rundle County Charter. On May 20th, 2024, the council passed Resolution 15-24, which placed a question on the charter, or placed a question on the ballot, seeking a charter amendment for the 2024 general election, asking to amend the charter to increase the minimum value of purchases and contracts that are subject to the simplified competitive procurement process from greater than $5,000 to greater than $10,000. That question passed with 89.44% of the vote, approving the change. And so pursuant to that resolution, the charter change took effect 30 days after the 2024 general election. So, this bill simply aligns the code with that county charter change, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions on this bill? Well, if it's a procurement under $10,000, we will not have to discuss it after this bill passes. So, all right. All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to Bill Number 9924, Severn Grove Special Community Benefit District. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Janay Moulden from the Budget Office and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So, the administration is seeking, at the request of the Severn Grove Improvement Association, which administers the Severn Grove SCBD, council approval to place a multi-year obligation on the district. The Severn Grove Improvement Association is in the process of obtaining a loan from Sandy Spring Bank for $140,000 for a term of 15 years to finance the association's renovation of its clubhouse. As security for the loan, the lender is requesting to utilize the assessments that are placed on homeowners in the district. It's the intent of the association that its annual assessments for the property owners will not change, and that the loan will be repaid with the annual SCBD assessments. Happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. Where is Severn Grove? Okay. Just curious. I just didn't know where it was. Are there any questions regarding Bill 9924? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we move into Bill Number 125, Office of Transportation, Transportation Officer. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Brian Ulrich from the Office of Transportation and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So, this is a cleanup bill. We're seeking to codify the Office of Transportation in the county code pursuant to Article 5 of the county charter. The county council, on recommendation of the county executive by an ordinance known as a reorganization ordinance, which is what this is, may create new offices or other units in the executive branch. The charter further provides that, except as otherwise provided by a reorganization ordinance, the executive branch shall consist of the offices and departments specified in the charter. So, prior to our administration, responsibility for the, what is now in the Office of Transportation, transportation mobility and transportation planning, was divided between the Department of Aging and the Office of Planning and Zoning. At some point prior to 2018, due to some retirements of staff, this was all consolidated under one person who was referred to as the Transit Officer. However, that office was never codified. And so, last summer, during discussions of Bill 6124, which was the Anne Rundle County Transit Development Plan, it was discovered that the office was not actually in the code. So, we are fixing that and putting it in the code.
Do we anticipate any other offices that need to be added to the code?
We do not.
Just curious. All right. Are there any questions regarding the Transportation Officer? I am sure Mr. Snead will be glad to know that he will become official for his role. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Bill Number 225, the redevelopment bill. Mr. Hunt, and I believe we have a presentation.
We do. Give me one second.
Now that Mr. Evelyn has arrived, our grand, the grand entrance, we're ready to go.
Yep. Okay. So, Bill 225 is a reintroduction of prior legislation. It's very similar to Bill 8623. You may remember the redevelopment bill from late 2023. So, the administration is seeking approval of this legislation that incentivizes and simplifies the redevelopment of existing development sites, except for, well, actually, I'll turn it over to Jansen to start with the slideshow. So, just let me know when you're ready for the next slide, Jansen. Okay.
... the delay. But as the presentation says, this bill ultimately encourages reuse and improvements to older vacant, unutilized commercial properties. We also wanted to create additional opportunities for better housing choices. And ultimately, if we just take a step back, yes, as Mr. Hunt mentioned, this is not, this is not deja vu. This bill is very similar to what was introduced last year, and we believe this is important legislation. This is important policy that is needed for Anne Rundle County. Ultimately, this legislation provides flexibility by streamlining the development approval process in support of the county executive's priorities of community and transit-oriented development, along with affordable and market-rate housing. This bill is another critical tool to address the need for housing in this county while incentivizing redevelopment away from greenfields. This legislation, next slide, please. This legislation is also aligned with Plan 2040. Of course, we'll have a technical difficulty. Yes. This legislation is also aligned with Plan 2040. The county's developed GDP. Again, it provides incentives for redevelopment in targeted growth and revitalization areas. Although countywide, this legislation would only apply to redevelopment projects in the following GDP policy areas: critical economic, critical corridor, town center, village center overlay, and TOD. Now, as I mentioned, if you look in Plan 2040, and I'm not going to go over each and every goal, but there are redevelopment is one of the themes that is described and mentioned repeatedly in the GDP, starting with the built environment goal BE1, align development regulations and review practices with a focus, and I'm sorry, with a desire to focus redevelopment in those particular policy areas I just mentioned. It talks about ensure infill redevelopment in existing residential neighborhoods are compatible in scale. Talks about focusing on carefully planned and high-quality, this is goal built environment five. And it talks about encouraging redevelopment and revitalization in these targeted development, redevelopment, and revitalization policy areas. And we go on to, there's B, there's goal built environment seven, nine, 10, 12, 13. So, redevelopment is something that the GDP, the adopted GDP is big on, is something that we are big on. Ultimately, I know I'm not even following the slideshow, Ethan, so I apologize. You going to the next slide? Yeah. Is that my slide or yours? Okay. I'm just going to keep going, Lynn. You jump in, anyone jumping when the spirit moves you. But ultimately, redevelopment is defined as substantial improvement. We wanted to make it consistent with the Code of Maryland regulations. And in it, it talks about if a substantial improvement exceeds 50% of prior assessment value. We talk about redevelopment, again, redevelopment is substantial improvement of an existing structure, or it's new construction on a lot, when existing impervious is greater than 40% of the total site area, or the site is under reclamation or environmental remediation. I'm going to shut up and let OPZ staff. Jenny, Lynn?
Hi. I'll pick it up from here, continuing along with some of the key provisions of the bill. The development review process, it offers an approach to streamline that process by allowing for only one application phase instead of the two-part phase that a standard project uses. So, that would offer some time, as well as some cost savings to an applicant. And it also sets up a process for a pre-application meeting related to a concept plan, and this will help fulfill some of the regulatory requirements for the stormwater management process. Moving on to the next slide, excuse me. It also simplifies the process and expands the process for seeking a modification. It retains some of the criteria that have to be demonstrated, but it removes the requirement that the applicant has to demonstrate undue or unnecessary hardship, which is often one of the most difficult tests that an applicant has to meet for a modification. And it also allows for provisions in Article 18 to be waived by a modification process as opposed to the variance process. So, that will also be a time and cost savings to the applicant because they won't have to take their variance before the hearing officer. It does allow for modifications to natural features to not have to be requested if that disturbance has already occurred in the previous development. It adjusts the process for open space and rec area and open area requirements to allow that the applicant can submit an alternate open space and rec area plan without having to do that through a modification process. And then it also allows that our office can attach conditions to any modification that we decide to approve. Moving on to the next slide, the APF requirements. It includes an alternate road APF, and this is something that's been used in some of our town centers previously by increasing the number of daily trips that kick in the APF test. And ditto for the school APF test. It provides an alternate test that we have used, I think, in parole, and something similar in OTC as well. Moving on to the next slide, there are some changes. There are some allowances for projects that include multifamily dwellings, actually, townhomes as well. And this is that for redevelopment projects in the three commercial districts, C1 through C3, currently, they have density limitations, and they're also, projects are also required to provide a certain percentage of non-residential floor area. And this bill allows that if the project meets the definition of redevelopment, they do not have to fulfill that non-residential floor area requirement that can redevelop fully with townhome or multifamily uses, and they have a higher density limitation in most cases of 22 units per acre. So, that summarizes the key provisions in this bill that are meant to promote and incentivize redevelopment. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Hunt, Mr. Evelyn.
If Jansen doesn't have anything else, we're happy to take any questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just looking at the very beginning of the bill, this is not really a bill that would be applied countywide. It would just be the critical economic policy area, town center, and the TOD areas.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Picker.
I was going to say piggybacking on that. I didn't even think that was funny. What Ms. Fiedler just said, we, what is really helpful, and I know in the conversation when this similar bill was defeated last winter, fall, the community and some of my colleagues were concerned about its applicability. It's great to list where it's applicable, but it would be really helpful, because when you show that map of where those policy areas are, it's really very, very narrowly applied, right? So, before, this is the first opportunity for a work session with this bill, but maybe at the public hearing, there could actually, in this presentation, be a map, because it is very narrowly tailored to certain development policy areas. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's the way the bill is drafted. I think that's important for folks to know as we talk about this in the public sphere.
Certainly.
The bill is also, you know, it's mirrored a little bit after the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Overlay, so I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute to ask some questions about how those two play. But before I ask the question, I'm going to, the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Overlay, which was passed unanimously in September of 2020, we've seen about three projects come through that policy. One, only one, that was really kind of in the spirit of redevelopment, which would be the Moose Athletic Club on Crane Highway. I anticipate that we're going to get this bill passed. So, once we do that, what is the, what do you think the role of the administration is to not just pass the legislation, but promote the policy in the community with those that we're trying to attract to invest in our older commercial corridors? Because I've been a little frustrated, as much as I would love to be a commercial developer or a commercial broker, that's not my role as the council member. So, I've been a little frustrated that we haven't necessarily promoted the benefits and incentives of the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Overlay. So, I'm hoping, whether it's through economic development or through other communication tools, that we're going to do a better job of trying to not just change the code, but actually, the goal is not to just pass a piece of legislation. The goal is to see a positive impact in our communities, right? And I know I'm still waiting for some of those to come to fruition. So, I think we need some analysis of what's been happening in that sustainable community area of Glenn Burney. The code is there, the policy is there, but it hasn't necessarily produced the kind of redevelopment we've been looking for. So, I think there's probably other market forces or other things that we might want to analyze and understand so we can see some positive change. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I think, I think your point about market forces and other things is well-taken. I know the real estate market in general has just been kind of tumultuous over the last several years, but I will, I made a note, I'll reach out to EDC to have that discussion.
And then, there was a question in there somewhere. But the Glenn Burney Sustainable Overlay, would a project that is in that mapped area, do they, is it a choice? You have to go this path or that path? Or is it, you get the benefit of, are the incentives of this redevelopment bill different than the overlay?
Yeah. As the bill's written, both, the redevelopment bill is not an overlay, per se, but there's an option to use it. In other words, if an applicant wanted to, they could submit a project that meets the definition of redevelopment here, but not use these provisions. I don't know why that wouldn't happen, but they could. And of course, the Glenn Burney Overlay is optional as well. So, I think in the applicability section on page two of this bill, 177311, states that, and that is a code section from the Glenn Burney Overlay subtitle. So, that states that an applicant, under that subtitle, can also use the provisions of this bill in lieu of or together with.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there, is there a difference, and if there is, if you could articulate it for me, between the previous bill and this bill in the APF requirements for the redevelopment, just looking at what was in the last bill compared to this one?
The previous redevelopment bill?
Correct.
I don't think there are any changes in the APF requirements. Correct.
Right, same.
Thank you.
Turn myself on. There we go. The new MPDU program that we have, does that apply to any projects created through the redevelopment bill?
Yes.
Yes.
This bill takes effect July 1st, which is the same date that the MPDU bill takes effect.
And everything's in alignment to have this too. Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from the administration? All right. All right. Well, then we will move on to, what number are we on? Bill Number 325, an ordinance concerning general development plan, Region 9. We're moving on to our next regions, and welcome, Ms. Pompa. We'll be seeing lots of you in the coming months. Glad to see you again. And I believe we have a presentation as well. And for those watching from home, this is the fourth of our nine regions that we are hitting. So, we were, we are almost at the halfway mark.
We'll be very shortly. So, if everyone's ready, I'll get started. Again, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pompa, Cindy Carrier, Eric Ketterling, and Jessica Levy from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So, Bills 325 and 425 are the ordinances for the adoption of the Region 9 Plan and Comprehensive Zoning, which covers the Mayo Peninsula, Galesville, West River Zoning, which covers the Mayo Peninsula, Galesville, West River, Shadyside, Churchton, Deal, Tracy's Landing, North Beats, North Beach, parts of Edgewater and Friendship. And I know the office has been working quite a bit with Councilmember Ledbetter. I'm going to turn it over to Christina Pompa for some opening remarks.
Thank you so much. Chair Hummer, Vice Chair Rodvian, members of the council, we're very excited to be here with the first region for our second round, which is Region 9. This is Ms. Ledbetter's region, completely in her district. And Eric and Jesse are going to do the presentation today. Cindy and I are here for questions and obviously anything you may need from Kelly Kenny. I just want to, before I turn it over, say some thank yous. It takes a lot of work to get here from a lot of people. And while we are here before you, there are many others that I think need to thank you. I'd like to thank the administration for their support and involvement in the process. Obviously, the long-range planning staff who you see here, plus Michael Stringer, who's been very involved in Region 9. You really don't get to see very often our GIS staff that do the mapping with comprehensive planning and also the work we do with the planned land use in the region plan. There is a lot of mapping that goes into this, and those staff are not here, but they are very involved. I'd like to say thank you to our partner agencies who are all listed at the very beginning of the region plan. We couldn't do this without their support and their work. And especially the Office of Law. The Office of Law has a lot of work to do with us during the whole council process, and we really thank their support and everything they do. Obviously, we had 15 Stakeholder Advisory Committee members appointed. They met over the course of a year. I'd like to thank them for their work. They were very involved. They did a fantastic job collaborating with one another. Obviously, our PAB members, it's a heavy lift for them in the fall when the bill, when the region plans and comprehensive zoning go to them for review. The stakeholders, we couldn't do it without them. And then, obviously, Ms. Ledbetter, who has already been very engaged with the Office of Planning and Zoning, and we look forward to carrying on the conversation with you now. I think there are a couple differences I just want to highlight before I turn it over to Eric. You know, we continue to learn as we go through these processes. And two differences that we've had with round two that we didn't have with round one. Number one, the council had authorized us to have two contract positions to help us with outreach. That has been very impactful. We feel that we have reached more people through that process. There's detailed information in our plan about that and also on our hub site. And then, the other thing that we did differently this time, we really spread out a little bit more the PAB schedule because with round one, we almost killed them and ourselves with how compressed everything was, but we stretched things out, and I think that was also better for everyone. So we're really happy to have, this is the first plan for the new year with you, and regions one and three are coming on their heels in February. So March is going to be a very busy month for us. And with that, I'll turn it over to Eric Ketterling.
And Cindy for their leadership throughout the whole process. I asked a million questions every day, and they put up with me, so I appreciate that as well. So to just get started, as Christina mentioned, my name is Eric Ketterling. I'm the senior planner, working on the project. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the region plan process itself, the relation to Plan 2040, and hit on some key bullet points about the outreach we've done through the Region 9 process. And then, overall, give a brief overview of the structure of the plan itself before moving into the comprehensive zoning overview. And then Jesse will give a good demonstration of the comprehensive zoning web viewer. Most of what you've seen, and most of what you're going to see and hear are you're likely familiar with. We want to just emphasize a few points just for the public so everyone can be caught up to speed. I know it just seems like yesterday we were here with Region 4, but with a new, new area of the county, we want to make sure everybody's caught up to speed. So Plan 2040 was the latest version of the county's general development plan, and it was adopted by the council in 2021. OPZ worked with county and state officials and agencies to develop a plan with the assistance of a 23-member citizen advisory committee. The plan opened, the plan is a countywide plan and provided a 20-year vision for the future, and it really focused and centered around land use. It sets the policy framework to protect the natural environment, shape the built environment, provide public services to promote healthy communities, and support a diverse, resilient economy. This was developed through dozens of public forums and was informed by thousands of comments from the community members. There are many concerns throughout the county, including traffic congestion, school capacity, environmental protection, and housing affordability. Plan 2040 includes goals, policies, and strategies to address these issues and manage development and redevelopment. I'd also like to note that Plan 2040 won the 2021 Maryland Sustainable Growth Award in the Sustainable Communities category. So Plan 2040 set up the process for smaller regional plans to be carried out to look at ways to implement the goals, policies, and strategies of Plan 2040 at the community level. Ethan mentioned the areas covered in Region 9, from Mayo to Friendship and Edgewater and everything in between. The second set, as mentioned, is going to be Regions 1, 3, and 9. Regions 2, 4, and 7 were adopted last year, and 5, 6, and 8 will be coming shortly.
Next year.
Next year. Not that short. So the region plans follow Plan 2040, as I mentioned, and are intended to drill down and make recommendations on how to implement the goals and policies. Like Plan 2040, the region plans are policy guides and not regulatory. The region plans are to be implemented through a range of tools, including the zoning maps, zoning and development codes, capital improvement programs, policy and/or study initiatives. I'd like to note that the comprehensive zoning is part of the region plan process. Also, as mentioned, the region plan, the Plan 2040 created the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, allowing between 9 and 15 members for each region. Region 9 was, had 14 members finish the process, and I really want to send a shout out to them and thank them for their hard work, their tireless effort on all this. They came to every meeting prepared, they came to every meeting talking, willing to talk, and it was great to work with. And we have a lot of good ideas, I think, represented in this plan based on the information we received from them. The SAC was appointed through Resolution 3523, and the members of each Stakeholder Advisory Committee were either nominated by the county executive or county council member, and the appointment of each SAC was approved by county resolution. Their work started off in October of 2023, and they met an additional 10 times between then and August of 2024. Quorum was met and verified at every meeting. And they really helped facilitate the outreach that we as staff were doing. Some key points of the outreach that I like to point out from a staff perspective was we, we sent an initial postcard to every property owner within the region, as well as sending letters to property owners who had a recommended zoning change. We had an initial questionnaire that asked what they like about their area, are there challenges, are there opportunities? And those were open-ended responses. We had interviews with key stakeholder groups and gave presentations to different community groups, HOAs, and places of worship. Owner applications for zoning requests were available from October 3rd to December 15th of 2023. We had two online community forums where attendees could learn about zoning process, the zoning process. We had a visioning questionnaire that was ideally got to be more detailed, drilled down on some issues that were emerging within the region. We had a natural environment questionnaire, we had a housing and economy questionnaire, and we also had a transportation and healthy communities questionnaire, each of which allowed for the members of the public to provide their input on the draft recommended strategies of Region 9. We also had the initial draft zoning map, which was open from June 18th to the July 15th of 2024. This was another time where owners could apply for a zoning request. Comments were received online, by email, phone, and I believe we even got a few via snail mail. So it was, we really took comments any way we could. There were SAC meetings, each SAC meeting was open to the public, and the public often came. They often provided public comment at the end of these meetings. And in September 2024, the Planning Advisory Board, draft region plans and draft maps were also, again, made available to the public. The PAB was briefed on the plans in September. The PAB took comment from September to October, and then deliberated in November. We took ads out on the Capitol on September 11th, 18th, 25th to advertise these PAB meetings as well. Additionally, we also have a newsletter that we send out. We worked also with the CECS, Wednesday Update, from the County Exec's Office to advertise the key dates and milestones throughout the entire process. We, staff provided assistance at tabling events and community events through civic groups or, or different organizations. And one other thing I'd like to mention is, the Region 9 team, we worked with the South River High School Signature Program. We were really able to give the students real-world examples of how the economy, housing, and the environment can come into play when talking about the future. And I'd like to give a shout out to the, the teachers and the students. I do feel like our future is bright and it's in good hands, so I'm not too worried about the youth of tomorrow. And again, all that input that we received through all those steps and additional really helps shape where we're going with the plan. So the region plan structure itself is very similar to Plan 2040. It starts with a vision statement, which really guides the whole plan itself. And the vision statement provides common direction, long-term planning, and informed by the community and tailored for each region. There is a background existing conditions section that provides descriptions of each community. And the four primary chapters are natural environment, built environment, healthy communities, and healthy economy. Each of these chapters provide unique and specific ideas and aspects of Region 9. And then the last chapter is the implementation chapter, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. And then there are some appendices as well. So regarding the implementation, in the implementation matrix in the chapter, there has recommendations that are specific to each region, and you can see how each strategy is anticipated to be implemented. It shows the implementing department and performance measures to help with accountability, and the anticipated timeline for each implementation strategy. Again, recommendations are not, are generally meant to drill down to specific issues for the region and not repeat the strategies from Plan 2040. And then finally, in the appendix, you can see that there are appendices that include tables and maps that note changes in the development policy area, as well as the planned land use from Plan 2040. These tables are in the plan, and they can also be found on the hub site as well. And the hub site is aacounty.org/region9, and we'll show that at the end of the presentation as well. One other thing I'd like to remind is that the region plans, like Plan 2040, are again policy documents, but comprehensive zoning is regulatory. During comp zoning, OPZ makes recommendations to align with the region's zoning with the planned land use map as required by state code. The region plan also recommends some updates to the planned land use and as adopted by Plan 2040. There are three key growth management tools, first of which is the Development Policy Area, or DPA. And that is a little more broad. It identifies where development and redevelopment are encouraged, as well as where preservation of particular character or natural features are prioritized. A little more specific, but still a little broad, is the Planned Land Use, or PLU, and that further guides development patterns based on the vision for the region. The DPA and PLU set a policy framework for, that is implemented through zoning, which, again, zoning is regulatory. And then zoning, which is used to help implement these policies, provides regulatory detail of such type and intensity of uses and whether they are permitted in certain areas or not. Table 17 in Volume 2 of Plan 2040 really does a lot to outline these different categories. So speaking of zoning, here's how it changes, changes in zoning is recommended throughout the Region 9 process, throughout the region plan process. In our comprehensive zoning analysis for the region plans, we start with adopted DPA and PLU and end up with the zoning recommendations, but sometimes we have a zoning recommendation that necessit, that necessit, necessates, sorry, a update to the PLU or DPA. I'll quickly review some of these types of changes that we've recommended. One thing I like to emphasize is the consistency to the planned land use and zoning is a state requirement, which leads us to our first type of change, a consistency change. Here is part of Table 17 at the bottom of the slide from Plan, from Volume 2 of Plan 2040, and it provides a crosswalk of how anticipated uses correlate with the planned land use and zoning. The example you can see on the right-hand portion of the screen is in Mayo, off of Beverly Avenue or MD 214. And in this case, the planned land use is a residential low density. And this was adopted in Plan 2040 to align with the built condition of the, of the development, which is not anticipated to change for the next 20 years. However, the, the zoning is R5. The proposed zoning of R2, through the region plan process, aligns with the planned land use of what has actually been built to help protect the physical character of the area and better predict infrastructure needs. The next type of change is a change to align zoning with the parcel boundaries. And this example is from the Village at Lee Air Park. Bill number 22-23, adopted by the council, allows for OPZ to correct minor misalignments between the parcel and zoning layers. For the, from the round two region planning efforts, OPZ GIS's staff performed a comprehensive review of misalignments and made corrections. The scope of this effort was conservative, so there are still parcels and zoning misalignments that are being corrected through the region plan process and will be included for the council review and adoption. We are intentionally applying a single zoning category to each parcel unless there's a documented reason to split zone a parcel. This will provide integrity to the zoning map and diminish the likelihood of a boundary being arbitrary. The next type of change is the refinement to the OS zone to align with public parks and natural areas, and areas covered by conservation easement in perpetuity. This process aligns with the goals and policies of Plan 2040. The OS district was initially created in 1970's comprehensive zoning, rezoning of the original 1952 zoning map. The OS zone appears to be generally based in part on an older federal emergency management area, or FEMA, 100-year floodplain boundaries, but, but in our research, there is no documentation for much of these OS boundary, and the justification is unclear. The FEMA floodplain maps have been updated over time and now deviate from the OS zoning district. County code, as well as state and federal laws and regulations have been adopted that include more stringent protection of floodplains, streams, wetlands, as properties develop. OPZ believes these other regulations are more effective and more appropriate tools than a zoning map for managing risk of development in floodplains and conserving the natural functions of streams and wetlands. However, even though their original policies in Plan 2040 regarding conservation parks and open space, planned land use continued to be OPZ's preference for the reasons mentioned, there are stakeholders that do not trust that the county code will protect the natural environment. Given this input for consistency changes, OPZ retained the OS zone where it was greater than 20% of a property and was encumbered by natural features based on the county and state guidance maps. It is OPZ's recommendation that the county code be updated to minimize modifications to natural features and that the future planning effort reconcile these OS zoning, OS zoned areas to align with property boundaries as originally intended in Plan 2040. For Region 9, this resulted in limiting 411 consistency changes. All property owners with this proposed zoning change from PAB to the county council will receive a letter from OPZ informing them of this change. Letters were being mailed this week, and if a property owner does not agree with the recommended zoning on their property, they can apply for account, they comply to council for an amendment during the Region 9 comprehensive zoning bill. Planned unit developments, most of the planned unit, most of the planned unit developments in the county contain zoning lines that do not correspond with land use density. Many of them run through the middle of subdivisions. No changes are being recommended or proposed in these communities because of the unique agreements executed for each planned unit development. OPZ has created a PUD layer that is available to the public on my Anorundal map viewer. Finally, we have the OPZ and/or SAC recommended zoning changes, as well as property owner change applications. We, we reviewed the draft zoning maps and public input on them with the SAC during May of 2021. twenty twenty-four and again in August of twenty twenty-four. The PAB also reviewed these maps and the draft before council reflects refinement based on that input. So that was a general overview of what we what work has been done. The rest of the presentation will give a brief overview of what is being recommended. Again, with all the outreach that's been conducted and all the work of the SAC and members of the public coming to these events, I think it would be important to just highlight a few bullet points of what we've heard. And each time we've been out there, we have heard the the phrase keep South County role. And I think that is what is reflected in this plan in front of you. But we've also heard other things such as traffic, roadway safety, and environmental protection, as well as housing diversity and maintaining the character of the communities. The Region Nine vision statement is in front of you now. I'm not going to read that, don't worry. But the vision statement does cover a lot of key elements of everything we've heard. The vision statement was ultimately approved by the SAC and the PAB. And just for a few quick bullet points, it talks about environmental protection, historical and cultural importances, infrastructure investments, equitable housing to equitable access to housing, good jobs, schools, recreational facilities, among other things. So each of the chapters, I'll be brief here. There are again the natural environment and built environment are the first two chapters. The natural environment has twelve strategies specific to Region Nine, some of which focus on land conservation or ag pres as well as protection for the coastal communities. The built environment is again the largest chapter of the plan. It's got twenty-eight strategies and again talks about housing as well as the the different challenges and opportunities with traffic and roadways. Healthy communities have eleven strategies, some of which focus on the community spaces such as parks, rec centers, senior centers. And then the healthy economy have twelve strategies, and that really highlights the importance of local businesses as well as education and engagement for maritime marine and agricultural trades. Before we head into the comp zoning aspect of Region Nine, we want to briefly mention that the holding of the holding capacity. While this is presented while this has been presented both to the SAC and PAB in the past, this, sorry, the holding capacity is based on existing zoning and does not take into account any changes that may result from Housing Attainability Act, a bill numbered seventy-two dash seventy-four, which comes effective July first of twenty twenty-five. So as we walk through the Region Nine, I'll go community by community in alphabetical order to match the zoning tables. If there were if there were a different recommendations on zoning between the staff, the SAC, and or the PAB, I'll note these areas in the presentation. For the entire region, there were only a total of three recommendations where there were divergent recommendations. However, there were some additional applications and recommendations the SAC did not reach consensus on, and there were additional there were additional recommendations produced after the SAC and or PAB. So they do not have a recommendation listed. I will note which communities communities these are in as we move throughout the presentation as well. While we won't be discussing any specific properties, each of the zoning recommendations can be found on the comprehensive zoning tables as well as the web map viewer online, and that is available to review by everyone. One thing, one additional thing I'd like to mention is that there are currently no mixed use zoning in Region Nine and no recommendations in the plan for mixed use in these areas. In light of the recent adoption of Mixed Use Bill seventy-five dash twenty-four and its pending effective date, there are no situations in Region Nine that would require an amendment to reflect the new mixed use zoning category. During the next comprehensive zoning process, it can be determined through public engagement whether or not any areas in Region Nine may benefit from the new mixed use village district, which is intended for a small-scale, walkable, low-intensity mix of uses for local-serving retail, office, and residential uses. Additionally, I'd just like to point out, here are the change statistics for Region Nine. If a particular zoning category is not listed, that means it is not currently in Region Nine and not being proposed for Region Nine. For example, R twenty-two is not currently in Region Nine and is not being recommended for Region Nine. As you can see, the largest increase in this is the OS zoning category. This is a result of the recommended changes, particularly with the RA and R one zoning, which have the greatest decrease. However, the PAB draft saw an increase of only one thousand one hundred and forty-five acres, while this recommendation is approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifteen acres. This large increase to OS is due to the information presented on a few slides ago. Generally speaking, for Region Nine as a whole, not much is changing, and the zoning recommendations generally align with the current zoning adopted today. So the first community is Churchton. There were three initial zoning change applications that the staff, SAC, and PAB reviewed. There was only one where the SAC couldn't did not reach a consensus. There were nine OPZ and or SAC recommended zoning changes, including one that was created after the PAB and SAC meetings. So when you look into the table, you will not see a recommendation from those bodies. But OPZ, SAC, and the PAB are in agreement with all of the recommendations. A deal, there were four initial zoning change applications plus an additional one during the PAB. So again, SAC did not meet to discuss this, and there is no recommendation from the SAC on that single application. And there's also an additional recommendation created after the SAC. So again, they did not have a recommendation on that as well. But all other recommendations OPZ, SAC, and PAB are in agreement with. Edgewater, there were eleven initial change applications, one of which the SAC did not reach a consensus. And then again, six additional applications that came in during the PAB after the SAC. There were six OPZ and or SAC recommended recommendations. Two recommendations came after the SAC, but the OPZ, SAC, and PAB read on all others. This might be my favorite because it's hard to disagree when there's nothing to discuss. So there were zero zoning. Region Nine has a very, very small portion of friendship in the region, which is why there are zero recommended changes. Galesville, there were seven zoning change applications, all of which were reviewed by PAB and SAC, all in agreement. There were two OPZ recommended zoning changes. One recommendation came after the SAC, so they do not have a recommendation, but all three bodies are in agreement with all the other applications. Mayo, there were thirteen initial zoning applications. Two applications where the SAC and PAB agree, but is different from the OPZ recommendation. And there was one application where the SAC did not reach a consensus. And then again, one additional application during the PAB process. There were twelve recommended zoning changes by staff or SAC, five of which came after the SAC. And of those five, two of those came after the PAB. So those two do not have a recommendation by PAB or SAC. But all three bodies are in agreement with the remainder. The North Beach, there were three zoning change applications and one OPZ or SAC recommended change, all of which were reviewed by all three bodies and all are in agreement. Shadyside, there were four zoning change applications, one application where the OPZ and SAC have different recommendations, and there's one application where the SAC did not reach a consensus on. And then there were two of there were nine recommended zoning changes and then two recommendations after the SAC. Tracy's Landing, there were three initial zoning change applications, all of which were reviewed by PAB and SAC and all were in agreement. But the four recommended zoning changes were created after the SAC, so the SAC does not have a a recommendation, but the PAB and PAB and OPZ are in agreement. And then finally, we have West River. There were four zoning change applications, one application where the SAC did not reach a consensus, but there were five recommended zoning changes, and all PAB, SAC are in agreement. So with that being said, I want to hand this over to Jessie, and she's going to walk you through the comprehensive zoning web viewer.
Good morning. So yes, I will be walking through the comprehensive zoning web viewer. A huge thank you to our research and GIS team that put together this web viewer for everyone. Before we start that, we have a slide on some of our shorthand naming conventions, just so that everyone can be on the same page. Right here in the middle of the screen, we have the comprehensive zoning change number. This is a code that has various pieces. So the first piece is the CZ, which stands for comprehensive zoning. At other times, in our planned land use table or in our development policy area table, you may see a code of PLU or DPA at the beginning. So that just kind of shows you what we're talking about. Next, you'll see the region number. So in this example, it is R one. When we're talking about Region Nine, it will be R nine. Next is the community code. I have those on the next page for you all to show you the various community codes for Region Nine. And finally, we have our change number. The change numbers are shown lower on the screen with zero 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 one through zero zero nine nine being owner applications. The one hundred series of numbers are staff recommended changes. The two hundred series are staff recommended companion changes. Three hundred are SAC recommendations. Four hundred are owner applications during the preliminary draft. Five hundred are owner applications during PAB. And then we get to six hundred, which are owner applications during the county council process. Seven hundred, which are county council member initiated zoning amendments. And then one thousand and on is the consistency changes. This slide shows our community codes. They're not rocket science to figure out, but they are kind of difficult when we're talking about all of Anorundel County. So CHT is Churchton, DEL is Deal, EDW is Edgewater, FDS is Friendship, GSV is Galesville, MYO is Mayo, NBC is North Beach, SDS is Shadyside, TLD is Tracy's Landing, and WRV is West River. So next, I'm going to take us to the Region Nine hub site. You can find this website by searching A A county dot org slash Region Nine. And as of this morning, right here at the top of the page in this red banner, you can see links to the county council website with more information on the county council review process, as well as the final recommended draft of the Region Nine plan. And then this second bullet point is the final recommended draft of the comprehensive zoning web viewer. So finally, we are at our beautiful web viewer where we can see the comprehensive zoning map. As soon as you get into the map, there's a splash page with some information. On the left-hand side, you can see the legend, which provides information on the various zoning districts. And based upon the outline of the color code, you can see some information. So if the outline is a solid black outline around a property, that means that it is a zoning change recommendation that would be on your comprehensive zoning table. If it is a dashed gray outline around a property, that shows that it is a consistency change recommendation. And if it is just a standard red line, that is just the existing zoning for a property. There are various layers that you can toggle on and off to learn more information. A general rule of thumb is that these web viewers host a lot of data. So if you're looking for something specific, you might want to start with a lot of the layers turned off and then toggle them on as you need them. That will allow the program to run a little faster. Some of the layers include information on the address points, information on the zoning change area, whether it be a comprehensive zoning or a consistency change zoning recommendation, information on the community boundaries and the existing zoning. In all cases, if something is not quite lit up, like you can see here, this twenty twenty-three imagery is not a lit up option, it means that you have to zoom in further to be able to use that layer. Still moving down the options on the left-hand side, there's a print feature, a share feature, and then that splash page that I mentioned, in case, you know, you've already visited this site, it might not come up again. If you want to reread some of those details, it's that last button. So to move around the web viewer, you can navigate zooming in and zooming out if you're familiar with the area you're looking for. You can also type in an address or a change number. So in this case, I'll do Galesville one, just so it has something to look for. So if you type in that number in search, it sometimes takes a minute to come up, but then there is an option and you can click on it. And the map will take you directly to where that change number is located. Once you get there, you can click on the parcel or on the outlined area. And some information pops up. It starts with the identifying information for the parcels, such as the tax ID, the tax map and parcel number, and the street number. And then you can toggle through the different panes. And so we get to the comprehensive zoning change area information, which starts with the change number, the current zoning, the office of planning and zoning recommended zoning and justification, and then the acreage. A different additional information on each change number is housed in that comprehensive zoning change table, and that's where you'll find the recommendations of the SAC and their justification, as well as the recommendation of the Planning Advisory Board and their If you continue to scroll, you'll see more information about the community and the existing zoning. There are other ways to use this search tool. Like I mentioned, you can do addresses, you can do the change number, and I believe you can also do tax account numbers to try to find a property. And I think that's it, unless there's any other specific questions on the comprehensive
All right. Madam Chair, I'd like to just add one thing. I think Eric did a very comprehensive overview of everything. There's only one little detail. So we did send postcards initially to every property owner, alerting them of the process. That's the same thing we did with round one. This time, however, we also sent by bulk mail another mailing before the Planning Advisory Board. For the third round of regions, when we initiated, we sent a big bulk mail. So that goes out in an actual envelope rather than a postcard, and we seem to have better success with bulk mail getting opened. So round two had not only that initial postcard mailing, but also the bulk mail that went out right before PAB, which I think also helped us with our outreach.
Thank you. That was very thorough, and I encourage all council members, if you get any questions from residents, to tell them to go back and watch this presentation because it explains things so thoroughly about how they can look things up. So do I have any questions or comments, Ms. Pickard?
So thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Pampa, so with the when you talk about the bulk mail going out or the postcards, obviously, we're talking about Region Nine today, but there are three regions in the work. So that happened specifically for Region Nine, or those that's happened with the other regions as well?
Ms. Pickard, it happened for Regions one, three, nine.
Okay.
And then for the third round, they got bulk mail initially. We abandoned the postcard. And I believe, Ms. Carrier, it's our intention that we're going to do another bulk mail before Planning Advisory Board, because that seems to be the sweet spot for us.
So when you say bulk mail, you're it's not first class? That wasn't my question.
Okay.
You're saying we mailed to anybody's property that was receiving a change or to every address in the region?
Every property owner. Every property owner.
Every property owner.
Mm-hmm. Now, if it's an apartment or condominium, well, maybe not condominium complex. If it's an apartment complex, it's going to the owner of the complex.
Sure.
It's not going to every single resident.
Sure.
But yes, every property owner. Now, we do some work with our mailing list. We do take out duplicates. So let's say if they had five properties, they probably only got one letter for us. We're trying to be efficient with the funds we're expending.
Sure. And then you did do an excellent job looking at Region Nine. It's obviously all in Ms. Ledbetter's district. It's a very unique and special part of Anorundel County. In in my cursory review, I noticed that there was mention in several of the the towns about exploring housing options and things, but there's not necessarily there we're going to spend the next ten years exploring, it sounds like, because there's not necessarily changes made to zoning that even in those village centers. to zoning that, even in those village centers, that would allow, like you said, the mixed-use bill doesn't apply to these areas. And so we're going to explore for a little while before we change any zoning.
Yes, I would agree with that statement. You know, prior to the bill that was just adopted by council, which has done an overhaul for our mixed use, our mixed use was very much use-oriented, and it was at large scale, so that most everything that could be developed was at parole town center scale. That's obviously not appropriate for many areas of the county. We didn't have the vision of your new mixed-use village designation, which is what is going to allow the two to three stories, the mix of retail, office, and housing. So without that, we didn't really have areas in Region Nine that were identified for that zoning district. But there was discussion during the stakeholder advisory committees about the need for the, what would be considered missing middle housing, so to have more housing options.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's just really cute and historic and fun village centers dotting Region Nine as you go up the coast, right? So that return to that Main Street feel at certain appropriate intersections, I can see how that makes sense down the road, but not my district. So I'll let Ms. Ledbetter take the lead on Region Nine, obviously. It is a very unique part of our county. Thank you. But it does still have, there are affordability issues. There are still housing issues, even in our unique areas, that don't necessarily lend themselves to larger-scale policies, but where we need to be a little more parochial in our thought process, so that we ensure that there's sustainability in these communities for folks that have the generations that will live there now and come after, right? So it's quite an interesting planning process. Thank you.
Ms. Feedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that presentation. It brings me very quickly back to Region 4. So my one question is regarding the letters that went out to residents who have a consistency change proposed, or any change proposed on their property. Was there any adjustment to the wording? I know that this is something that we discussed in the debrief after Region 4. There was some kind of notice that, you know, participate in this process from the letters that went out in Region 4, but there were some property owners that just did not understand that either the change would happen, or it could be reversed, and they should really communicate, either way, with their council member. So going back to the question, has that language been adjusted in the letter that's gone out to residents or property owners?
For specifics, I'd have to do a side-by-side comparison. I don't have the specifics in front of me. But we do, as Ms. Pompa mentioned at the beginning, we are ever-learning, and as you mentioned with the meeting we had after Region 4, but yes, there have been revisions and additions made into these letters.
Perfect. And I think the, you know, the positive here is that the volume is much smaller, I think. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you all very much. As I said, that was very thorough, and we look forward to moving forward.
Madam Chair, if I may interject one moment, the council application page should be live within the hour. We were just working out a couple of bugs while this session was going on, so people should be able to apply by lunchtime if they so desire.
Great. So Region Nine residents, if you want to apply for a zoning change, you may go on this morning and do that. And just to be clear, that presentation covered both Bill Number 325 and Bill Number 425 regarding the Region Nine plans. But now move on to Bill Number 525. Ms. Ledbetter, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a pretty simple change. I heard from a waterman doing business, since code, the hours of operation for watermen doing business out of their homes was originally codified. Society has changed somewhat, and so there are some watermen that would like to be able to be open on Saturday, past 4:00 to 6:00. And so this is just a very simple change to allow them to have that extra two hours to meet their customer demand on Saturdays. Happy to take any questions.
I would think there's probably a lot of demand for their things on Saturdays people want to do.
Yes. Considering many of our watermen are out on the water in the first half of a Saturday, this gives them more time to, you know, sell their...
Sell their catch.
Their catch, yeah, exactly.
Does the administration have any comment?
Everyone should be able to get oysters after 4:00. Support this bill.
There you go. Are there any questions from colleagues? All right. Okay, and Bill Number, the one we've all been waiting for, Bill Number 625, an ordinance around miniature pigs. Ms. Feedler.
Thank you. I feel like with my past bills and the bills I'm working on, you might want to change this to Dr. Dolittle, because I feel like I'm dealing in the animal world a lot these days. But this is really quite simple. We had a bill in, well, not this council, but two councils prior, Bill 7018, allowed miniature pigs to be on residential properties. There is a constituent that I have who knew about that legislation, but did not realize that it had a sunset. And now their pig, Alfred, is living far from home, and they were separated during the storm. So we're trying to get Alfred home. So that is the bill. It resurrected Bill 7018 and removed the sunset.
Ms. Roll, it's nice to see you. Does Animal Control have any comment on miniature pig legislation?
Yes. It's on, okay. I would love to see Alfred get home. As far as the legislation's concerned, animal care and control is not against the ownership of miniature pigs in residential areas. There's different parameters. We don't feel the need for a separate license for pigs. The purposes of licensing an animal tends to be identification, if they're running at large, identifying, proving ownership. We have people prove ownership all the time when they pick up their stray animals. Also, enforcement of mandated vaccines, in all cases at this point, that's a rabies vaccine, which would not be the case with miniature pigs. So I think animal care and control is in favor of miniature pigs, not the licensing
Yes, Ms. Feedler.
So an amendment to remove that aspect would be supported by the department?
Yes.
All right, I'll get on that. You'll see that at the next meeting.
And hopefully Alfred is not running loose in places, so we don't have to worry that he would become a stray pig.
He is in a barn. Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Oh, I would just add, I know, excuse me, I know sometimes these matters are handled as zoning enforcement matters, so I don't know if Lynn wanted to add anything. I will just say, it's good to know that the pig's name is Alfred, because I was alerted that this bill came, or Councilmember Grasso's bill came as a result of a prior pig. I believe its name was Daisy. Before that, we had pigs named Kermit and Miss Piggy, who escaped and were living wildly. But yeah, so.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How large is the pet pig population?
It really varies. So the definition in this bill, it's a height of up to... Miniature pig means a type of swine that is less than 22 inches tall at the shoulder when fully grown. I did notice there's no weight restriction in the definition. So the weight, there's micro pigs. A few of us have been learning a lot really quickly about miniature pigs. There's micro pigs. Some of them can be, you know, there's different breeds. They can be a couple hundred pounds. I've seen some legislation that uses the number of a cap at 150, 100 pounds. So there's a real, short answer is there's a big variation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith. So Alfred, I said 19 because it came to mind. Alfred is actually 19 inches tall. But the reason that that cap was set, I believe, is that you can get, someone could purchase a miniature pig with the intent of it staying miniature, but not knowing the breeding background, it could end up being a much larger pig, and that's not the intent. So Alfred meets the criteria, and they are pretty small. Maybe there's pig diets out there or something for those that are larger, but still short.
No, thank you, thank you, Ms. Feedler.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments about miniature pigs? All right. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, that'll do it. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? May I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
There we go. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Like I stated earlier, the county council is adjourned until Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, for our next legislative session in our chambers. Thank you, everyone. Stay warm.